Council meetings of January twentieth, twenty twenty six to orders. Please write the pledge of allegiance.
I just believe this to the body of the citizens of America. And it's true that we're all like, we're just students, one nation. In this small, we're taking this.
Chargers.
Here's.
Corner.
Yes, yeah.
Olsen.
Here.
Paul.
Yeah.
Spencer, Richard, yeah.
Approval of the agenda, as you can see, we have an addition. Actually, yeah. Uh, number K Downtown Development Authority Social District Extension. Um, you need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Cool. Roll call.
Chargers.
Yes.
Corner.
Yes.
Olsen.
Yes.
Penfold.
Yeah.
Spencer, Richard, yes.
Um, request to appear before council, we have none, so we'll move right into public input. When you um, need to speak, please give her a hand. Move public input. Okay.
That's me.
My first sound box. Um, here's all the two.
There were four, four items of course found that is one was the Benzie County Chamber of Commerce. Um, the Benzie County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Partnership announced the first uh, executive director, John Willow. Um, charter communications, there's an increase in charges that began on January fifteenth. Uh, the Housing Trust of Benzie has their annual community conversations flyer. And charter communications again, um, showing upcoming changes from TV premium packages.
Chris Frizzell, let's probably get a little lax.
He didn't hear you, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Very sorry. We'll say.
I'll try this, I'm sorry Jim, go ahead.
Get my hearing aids fixed when we do it. I'm glad the planning committee and the council live in a nice neighborhood for the homes. But the friends of Benzie Bay which surround the developments. Are gonna be looking at forty-two homes and a number of projects being built. And there'd be eighty-six people moving in, forty-two automobiles next door. And the parking's gonna be a problem if you wanna come out and see somebody. Because there's no parking facilities for extras. But I want you all to enjoy your neighborhoods, people home delight. It's nice to have that kinda development.
Is there any other public input that I might've missed? Okay, thank you. Um, approval of amendments of the regular council meeting of eleven fifteen, twenty twenty five. Eleven or isn't it the twelve?
Twelve sixty.
Twelve sixteen.
Or no.
Twelve sixteen.
Wow.
Yeah, I had no doubts.
Okay, I didn't do that, so moment need to approve is presented.
Can you move through the next one?
Okay.
Well, back in.
Roll call.
Penfold.
Yes.
Corner.
Yes.
Chargers.
Yes.
Olsen.
Yep.
Spencer, Richard. Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is approval of bills. Please bear with us because this is all new to all of us, we're seeing on the computers. But so far, we're doing alright. You'd have one finding?
I found it. Make a motion to approve prepaid vouchers, five eight two six zero, through five eight four oh two. H R A nine two oh eight through nine two three zero, the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, thirty-six cents, of which eighty-two thousand for elders. Payroll vouchers, four three four. Three five seven four, E F C nine oh seven, group nine nine two three, the amount of hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars, seventy-eight cents, which a hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents for wages. Forty-five thousand, one hundred twelve, seventy-eight for employee retiree benefits. Seven thousand, fifty-six dollars, seven cents for employee deductions. Twenty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars, sixty-four cents for total tax classes, and fifty-one thousand, one hundred thirty, sixty-one cents for life.
I'll second to that. We'll move, or I'll second poll.
Corner.
Yes.
Olsen.
Yep.
Penfold.
Yes.
Spencer, Richard, yes, Chargers.
Yes.
Okay, then for our monthly eight four oh, zero three through five eight four six seven, and six zero, four six eight through six zero, four seven one. In the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand, sixty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Also.
Roll call.
Olsen.
Yeah.
Penfold.
Yes.
Spencer, Richard. Yes. Chargers.
Yes.
Corner. Yes. Alright, community reports. Well, seven ten. Okay, there's a loss. Okay.
I can understand.
Alright, okay, alright. Um. Mister Chargers.
Personnel committee did not meet, however, going to uh begin listening on some of the uh interviews for our new uh police officer. Uh, so we've not made that, we as fire advisory board did not meet, however, we are meeting Thursday night at six o'clock at the uh fire station with all the various townships to uh go through some numbers as well as our, the agreement that we have uh uh fourth, uh gonna be putting forth. Blue is continuing to march along, we're roughly uh fifty-four percent complete with that project uh of significance here in the last week. We've got some of the ultraviolet equipment in as well as the uh grid plates framing and the grid equipment should be coming in next week. So the uh major equipment is arriving on site, so activity's going to uh be picking up, so all is going very well there. Still on schedule uh for completion in the uh May, uh early June timeframe. And they're uh still uh tracking the budget quite well, so the plant's uh operating quite well even in the cold weather. And uh so everything's going really good down there. So, let's see.
So, finally. Okay, uh on my report, uh we met uh for finance, we met on January seventh. Uh, all funds are within range of fifty percent, and that's where we should be at this point. And there was a few general entries that were needed. Uh, discussion was held concerning uh contribution to the new chamber E D C. And at this time, we feel like we need to wait until May to make that decision as to how much um we should contribute. Um, the audit, because they're just starting and we're at the end of our fiscal year, so we gotta look to see where we can come up with funds as it is. Uh, the audit uh requested an extension from the state due to a little miscommunication between the court's office and the auditors uh. Uh, we probably don't get our report on the audit until at least, I'm figuring February.
Um, they sent me a draft and approved it, so it was just the per, the point of them.
Of them getting, yeah, okay, good, so is it available for us to review?
Um, I can double check to see if they sent the final copy yet, and if so, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, I'm sorry to interrupt, is there any major findings or just?
We definitely have to look at O P E M. As I mentioned in my report, um, that is definitely something that we need to start planning for. Uh, I think moving it over to Michigan class, we're gonna get better thing for our buck, shall we say. Um, I think that's gonna be super helpful, but we really do need to make contributions that in the past we've made an annual contribution, we really need to consider doing the same sort of thing.
Yeah, well, my thing should be some, but you have ones, we've had a lot of things going on. Okay, and D D A, um, there was discussion about Elaine Newble replacing our husband Brandy on our D B on our D D A board because uh it will be easier for Elaine to make the, the meetings because Brandy's traveling a lot. The waste signs are in production with the hope of being installed in the spring. And money has been so aside to pay for those. In front of from the chamber is working with the person who will be doing the winter photo shoot for uh, and we hope at our February, February meeting, we'll be able to view uh, the video of that. Um, and uh I don't know where I went with those words. The cost of the fireworks in a new company was discussed, the new company, however, would not be available for twenty twenty-six, uh, and there are more questions to be asked. Um, Brenna has set up a new website uh for Frankford downtown. I believe it's frankorddowntown.net. Am I correct?
Dot com.
Dot com, okay, um. And there will be a work session in our February meeting to discuss uh and recommend sidewalk uh use displayed merchandise at ten fifteen. Uh, more research is to be done on the cost of cups for the social district. Um, and social district was voted on to expand uh the local food property Scott Bradley where the food food truck area is. Um. And uh, the downtown district was approved by D D A, which council is not gonna be asking on that right away. Um, to uh approve the district to include the downtown district to be including the Doom project.
Um, so I'm confused, you said council doesn't act on that?
We're not gonna act on that at this time. We've got a lot of more research to look into.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, yeah, we need to, number one, get the D D A information all read, we all need to read that and go through that.
We also have to look at the financial aspects of it.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, the tree board met on January seventh uh here at City Hall in the spring. Right now, there are twenty-six planting sites. Uh, we will be uh planting fifteen trees under the consumers grant so that we can continue to get that grant, and that's was that ten thousand Josh, or is that the fifteen?
That's ten thousand.
Or ten thousand, okay. Uh, they're still talking about soil testing uh with the guidance of Kevin Sayer. Uh, plans to put stakes around our young trees because the deer and the weed whackers are hurting. Uh, and checking with the D N R to see if the urban grant uh would apply eleven thousand towards a new sidewalk between the trees that were planted along on the east side of twenty-two across from the Frankford Alberta school. Arbor Day is the twenty-fourth of April, and a student that was attending our tree board meeting is checking to see if they have a new for tree at the high school. That's the end of mine. Uh, Brady.
Uh, let's see. Rec board is on hiatus for the winter, a couple months, so we'll have to have uh airport with me in December, um. And our next airport meeting is this Thursday. Uh, public safety did not meet, but we'll be holding a meeting in later January.
Yes.
How about?
Pete.
Um, well, we're sure we could have a meeting. Um, Marine Authority did not have a meeting. Planning Commission, um, will probably rehash a fair amount of what was discussed that during the Doom project review tonight. Um, primary um, discussion did center around the Doom project, um. Concerns over parking, by your truck access were the primary um concerns during that meeting.
Cool. Um, known for arena meeting?
No.
Okay. Uh, Jenna.
Um, housing. January thirtieth. Um, we primarily discussed barriers and crossing. It seems that T M management is no longer managing it. Um, it's now P K companies and ultimates. Um, Samantha O'Brien, who lives in one of the communities is trying to get in touch with the manager there. Josh is gonna get in touch with Ryan Beji, who I think manages one fourteen anchor. Um, to maybe come do a housing permission meeting. Which would be nice. Uh, as far as Lake and Maine goes, um, the property manager there, we uh we kind of discussed the turnover rate means about fifty percent, which is a bit high.
Mm-hmm.
Um. They have one vacant spot as of our meeting on Tuesday, um, she did have evidence that she was going to review for that. Um, let's see, we did discuss the A M I for that place and seventy-five or at least higher than anticipated. Um, let's see. And then I believe Josh and Jeff are gonna remain to discuss some more um specifics in regards to the whole street. Um. Situation.
At the high school?
Yeah.
Thomas, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then John Stinson with Bone Stretch, um. They decided that they're gonna do eight units out by Crystal Mountain. Um, originally, they had a lot more units.
Thirty-two of them, okay.
Um, the original name of the thirty-two units, they were going to share water with Crystal Mountain. Now they're gonna do separate water, uh, which is the reason they had eight units.
Okay.
Um, and then raise everything they have on there.
Okay.
Jenna, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Did Lake and Maine say any, uh, for any reason why there's fifty percent?
Well, it's a combination, um, we did suggest that maybe like an exit I don't know, interview should be done, um. It seems like the folks who have been leaving, this management of their own money, they can't pay rent. Um, I believe job security is a situation as well, um, in great elsewhere. It seems to be all over the map, um, and primarily younger people, even.
Okay, so nothing specific against the building itself?
No, okay, no.
Thank you. Any other questions there? Any of us, okay. Listener's report. Christie, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to read yours, but I was at your.
I couldn't, um, this is a community health assessment, that was from the health department. My cloud, it might be apartment for, I don't know, subsidies, grants, whatnots, so that is your um copy.
Thank you.
Um, yes. So I didn't try to email you and it kept on coming back.
Me?
Yes.
It's because it was wrong on the website, but there was, it's supposed to be J. Holwerda. And C O frankford.net.
Okay. Because that's what I was doing.
We got changed because of the computer, but my old email had J. O., so, but she has corrected it now on the on the website.
So if you go to the SharePoint, Christie's is on there under, I'm sorry. The commissioner, the commissioner, it's under other assistant commissioner.
Okay. Well, I saw her at the commissioner's meeting, so I know some of the stuff.
Just names. It's on, uh. Uh, last month in December uh was my turn to do the road commission, so each commissioner is uh rotating through road commission, so December was my month. Uh, they talked about which we, yeah, anyway, I'll get to that, but um pursuing um general obligation, limited tax bonds to finance the new facility. So they're coming to the county. Um, so they were going on it, that's what they wanted to do, and then uh later on, in one of our meetings, they came to us and said that's what they wanted to do, and we did approve that. Um, uh, with the, I think, maybe I didn't talk in this meeting, um, one of the things about the building is that back back when they put the ballot language um on the ballot they didn't have confirmation from the state, if you call the state didn't have their budget prepared, so they didn't know if the tax money that we've all heard about now was coming, and so
That's the guest tip.
So my gas tax, yes, which comes from um the twenty-six percent marijuana tax, the gas tax, and corporate tax as well. Uh, it's ready. That, for knowing that, uh, they came to the voters, um, and that's why it was on the ballot. And now that the state has said that yes, this is happening, you are gonna get this tax. Um, they thought, you know what, we, we can bond with the county and we'll be able to repay it, so there were multiple meetings, um. Road commission said, you know what, we'll place a fund aside, where we'll have kind of a fund where we're gonna stick money in as it comes and that's the, to help pay for that bond, and so once we heard that, we said, okay, that, that makes a lot of sense, you're more or less guaranteeing that you're gonna pay this, this bond back. Um, so
And wasn't?
That was a good decision.
And wasn't the other part of it was, is that the merge was ninety percent funded and they all have excess revenue in order to put more energy into that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, and so I can rush that back to another question. One, can you do this with this tax money, and they can't. And um, two, um, is our, will our roads suffer? Um, and they uh gave us a nice little uh presentation that no roads won't suffer, and that the roads in Beni- Benzie County are actually uh quite a bit above um, I think the whole state and some other counties, so um in, in the grand scheme of things, our road commission is doing a pretty decent job, is what that show does.
Uh, Christie, I got a question, so on a rough order of magnitude, are they still anticipating an overall construction uh cost of roughly eighteen million dollars?
So again, the eighteen million is, is the absolute high, and again, at that point, they didn't have a good um, they, they, there's no, there was even an R F P, if you will, right? So they didn't exactly know, but they knew based off of um, the pricing, we knew that it was gonna be X amount of, I, I don't have it on the top of my head, X amount of square feet. I don't know, whatever the dollar count was, is they just did that multiplication and said it's gonna be ballpark.
Right, okay.
Eighteen million.
And so, let's just say for discussion purposes that it's still roughly that amount, maybe less. From a dollar amount or thirty to a dollar, how much with this extra tax revenue coming in on the uh gas tax, roughly how much are they gonna have? The whole amount?
They're bonding the whole amount.
Okay. Okay, those are my key questions.
I didn't make full statements, but you're fine with changing.
Um, well the man and I were talking earlier today and she had indicated that it was not out for uh uh, an R F P right now, you don't have to admit it, um, that it very soon would be.
Mm-hmm.
So are those plans available over the road commission to review?
Yes, that would be through the road with that, um, they are their separate authority, which is again why they said, okay, let's go to the county, here, i- i- it's very strange, right? Because they're their own authority, yes, we have a bond for them. And in, in the reason the county's a little about that, right, is because if the road commission defaults on it, that means the county is responsible for paying for it, and that's why having a separate fund that they're constantly feeding um, it gives us that feel-good feeling that yes, they're gonna be able to pay this back.
And then they mentioned that they hope to because of setting aside the funds that they were in hopes that they could pay it off eight to ten years through right?
Yes, correct, yes. So, a- a- yeah, a- again, they can, they can whittle that down, and they're pretty confident that they can do that. And so again, you know, ballot language, you know, that up to eighteen million, that doesn't mean that all eighteen million may have gone to that, right? So in that bond language, you know, they, they made it so that it was the absolute worst case scenario, so that um, they didn't have to another two hundred thousand dollars for X, maybe another two hundred thousand dollars for Y, and so that's why they, they saved two thousand dollars.
So um are they trying to bond eighteen million, or are they gonna wait till the pricing comes in?
Well, I think they're, I think they're bonding the eighteen million.
They have to do just like what we did with the uh fire truck, they have to do it through a referendum. And then after forty-five days, yeah.
Eighteen million with the dump, the cost of the buildings, that would make sense.
This is even, even so, you know, what they don't use goes right back into the thing.
Yeah, and usually the language say.
Why not use it if I have it?
They think it says up to eighteen million.
Something.
Yeah.
Okay, super, thank you.
Okay. No, actually it's uh
I can talk. Okay, uh, and then we're, um, they also talked about, uh they talked about their um county road association, and their county road association, and and again, I didn't quite get every little thing, but it sounded like there were only three voters out of the eighty-three counties. Um, and most of those voters in urban areas. And so they were talking about exploring possibly a rural road commission, um, that could help them, um uh, better maybe lobby, better utilize the, the girth of rural Michigan to kind of help um with some rural um, issues, so they um discussed that a little bit. Um, yep, so in our organization meeting, um, six uh, we, we re-elected um Archana Chair and Rhonda Nye as vice chair. And then we did, we did a few statutory things that we have to do every year, uh, you can read that in the report. Um, okay, materials management planning committee, uh uh so, um, yeah, we, we have a lot to say in that, um, one thing that we talked about is organics, so the organics are, um, you know, basically your food waste, right? And one thing about food waste is it's full of water, and so it's heavy. And guess what, when you go to, when you put your garbage and those trucks get dumped, it's, it'd be a poundage. And so if we can pull those organics out you know, um, that's gonna be really great for our diversion rates. And so we talked about that, there is a local uh composter in Traverse City called Carbers. Um, we were looking at that, however. Um, we were looking at that, however. Carvers is, um, a very small kind of grassroots organization, and we don't think that they'd be able to help us at a tri-county level. So one thing Fishback talked about is that there is, uh, someone in Southern Michigan. Who is poised and ready to kind of come up and help us in Northern Michigan. So we're gonna kind of explore some of that to help us with organics, because we definitely are going. To be addressing organics in our materials management plan. And another reason why food waste needs to be diverted from the landfill is because of the greenhouse gas. So what happens is when that gets into landfill, it, um, ferments, and it ferments rapidly. And it creates a lot of methane gas. And the, uh, waste facility, you know, they have those methane scrubbers, right? But because there's so much waste, food waste and scraps, that that methane comes up so fast. It overtakes those methane scrubbers, and methane comes out anyway. And so, um, the biggest way, um, we can, um, help our environment is by diverting that food scrap. Out of the landfill, and so, uh, we're really gonna focus on that. Okay. With that, our regular commission meeting. Um, I think I reported on this before, that, uh, Fair State University, along with Central Wellness and the Sheriff's Department. Have, um, are kind of working together, there's a grant out there where they are looking at their, um. Crisis Intervention Team, so they have CIT, uh, deputies and non-CIT deputies. And so they were kind of looking, um, at how that was working out. Uh, um. One of the big things is that, um, communication. Um, was difficult, uh, data collection was difficult for them. And, um, more work needs to be done, they are looking at, uh, future phases of the project. Uh, focusing on strengthening data accuracy, enhancing collaboration, evening understanding. What, what really, um, struck me is the strength that she highlighted, is that our rural counties collaborative approach to bridging gaps between law enforcement and behavioral health services. Was amazing, she said, um, and, and again, that's just our, our ruralness and our smallness, and that's, that's great. Uh, okay. We talked about that, um, also, we are. To the two-seven-oh, um, foundation, the amount of ten thousand dollars to replace. On the, uh. On the animal control facility. Also, with that.
I agree with you, yeah.
Yes.
You were discussing that, yeah.
Um, and then, um, this might be, um, relevant, we authorized a five-year subscription to motor, motor roll of rave. The previous emergency notification service we were using, um, had a data breach. And, um, couldn't quite recover, couldn't give us the service we wanted, and so. Um, my contributors, um, went back to the. That this is gonna be a problem, and, um, she researched this, and we went with motor roll of rave. See, and then. I think I'm going to end it there, because I have a lot to do today.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Christie. It was a very interesting meeting.
Yes.
Sure, no, nevermind, okay. Christie, who was again?
Yep.
Okay, okay, all right. And, uh, yeah, now. Now we're moving, uh, to department heads. Uh, yes, briefly?
Yes, there's, I had a lot in my report, um. Congratulations to Officer Joel, he's been here eleven years, so if you see him, can direct, congratulate him. Um, laptops, we, we've launched it, um. He has been in my office, we've had some suggestions, and, um, stay tuned, because I think we have a way to make this even easier. Um, you have your attainable housing timeline policy was drafted and reviewed by the city attorney. Um, refunds for the taxes were at nineteen thousand four eighty-six ninety-five as of January fifth. Um, that is a hundred and seventy-two checks. That were sent.
Yeah.
Early voting, um, after talking to my election chair and several of my inspectors. Um, we are, in the past, we've partnered with Gilmore Township. We are not going to do that for twenty-twenty-six. Um, is, it ended up being minimal savings and a lot more work for my inspectors. So we are not gonna be teaming up, we're just going to be serving, uh, straight from the front. Uh, we touched on the audit, um, I met with Molly Vanderhorn and Lindy Evans regarding interest rates, and we're gonna be assessing when. Changing one of our accounts over to a different title to receive more interest. Well, we received our reimbursement from Benzey County, we closed the bank account we talked about last, um, month. And HR compliance, there's a seminar that I'm going to be going to, um, it has to do with compliance with healthcare and other, um, HR requirements. And I'm working on a quote for. With Emergency Services Insurance Agency out of Michigan, um, sent him our policy, asked for apples to apples to be able to compare things. And at the end of December, all enterprise funds were in a positive cash balance. And any questions?
Yeah, so on the tax refund, what would you, uh, have a guess to me, basically of how long? How far along in that process we are? Halfway, three-quarters of the way, eighty percent?
Um, I have not looked to see how much, how much of our taxes we've received, wherever at on that. Um, but most people pay their taxes, they like to do it before the end of the year.
Right.
I'd say the bulk of them are probably done, I know she handed me about ten more, uh, yesterday.
The, the refunds and?
So they trickling, they're not as, as many as there was.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Was that upon the virtual sense?
Yes. Right, this time.
Gotta do it.
Yes, please cash your refund tax.
Yes. Helps for reconciling.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions, one of you?
Thank you, Chris, and your office is doing a. Stupidest job, if you had it. Stop. Okay, Josh, City Superintendent.
Okay, the planning commission meet, did meet, they set their twenty-twenty-six meeting calendar. So for twenty-twenty-six, they have targeted February, April, May. June, August, September, and November as months that they will meet in person. Uh, they have set aside, February is a workshop meeting. Uh, and that's gonna be, uh, on their agenda for this coming meeting in February. Uh. We're also working on various zoning ordinance amendments, uh, we have a zoning ordinance subcommittee that does meet. The same day that planning commission meets to go over, uh, various. Zoning amendments that we're considering, and some of those are gonna involve signage, uh, right now. Our larger facilities like our gas stations, our grocery stores, facilities like Grace and Prue. Uh, our current sign ordinance doesn't work well, those larger facilities, uh, it does work well downtowns, we're looking at. Making some changes to be more accommodating for the, the multi-use in larger facilities. Uh, we're also gonna be looking at, uh. Considering, uh, rooftop uses within the height limits, um, a big focus is gonna be on the East End corridor. We're at the fifth year point of our master plan, so we need to start looking at. Whether or not we want to do a revision or at least review it to see, uh, any changes that we wanna implement. Uh, we've done a really good job at, at laying out. Um, the future as it regards to sustainable workforce housing, um, infrastructure, those types of things, uh, we're in good shape. Um, but if we, an exercise that the planning commission will be working on over the next year, couple of years, uh. See what kind of changes we wanna institute as we move forward, a lot of the focus is gonna be on the East End corridor. And what that could entail with, with new development or, or at least retaining the existing businesses that we have. Uh, did receive some feedback from the core engineers. They're at the sixty-five percent design review standpoint with Breakwater, um. They're gonna be moving forward with final design, they're still anticipating. To have funding appropriated by Congress to, to do at least one of the phases in twenty-twenty-seven. So as they progress, we'll learn more about that. Um, the Shu North Gas Station, uh, as crazy as it sounds, they're gonna be applying for temporary occupancy, February thirteenth is what they think. Um, cause cold weather might slow them down a little bit, they can pour in concrete, uh, the entire winter, so, uh.
Right, certain times.
Uh, as far as the building.
Uh, temporary, it's your favorite.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm doing. Um, but it's, uh, it's been going really well.
It's, it's, it's taken eighteen months.
Yeah, they've done well.
Yeah. Cause they started July seventh.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's possible that, that doing this in the fall, winter with traffic, it might have helped out a little bit more than what it would have been summer.
True.
Uh, but it's going well. Um, Housing North, so for the last two years, I have been the president of Housing North, and I'm sure all of you. Heard of that group, they're a county, uh, regional agency agency associated with, uh. Helping the communities create stable course, I don't think, I've been the president the last two years, I just stepped down today. Um, so I still be on the board, but I'm no longer, uh, president. We've appointed somebody new in that position, but our executive director, Y'all Brown, um, has resigned and we're in the process. I don't even lose my mind for Housing North, so, um, my most application deadline was actually today, so. Uh, we're interviewing a, a new candidate, hopefully had a new leadership in place, uh, by the end of the month. The mayor and I had an opportunity to meet the new economic development officer that Benzey County has hired. Um, through their partnership with, uh, Benzey County Chamber of Commerce. Um, her name is John Velo, had a great meeting, a lot of energy, I think this is gonna be a great opportunity, uh, I'm hoping soon that she, she meets with Brown. I don't know if she's reached out to you yet for John Velo, but, uh, um, so far, this is. Uh, seems to be working out to be a real positive opportunity for her.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of fresh energy. Uh, we should know about our travel grants over the next couple of weeks, um, so we'll be on the lookout for that. Uh, any questions for me?
Mm-hmm.
Been doing a lot of following.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And they've been doing a good job.
Doing a great job.
Yeah, really good job, really appreciate that.
They've been deputized, it handles, uh, some parking violations if needed.
Yeah. I think this would be a good opportunity to stress to the public, do not park on streets. At, at night, uh, find a parking place either behind the businesses or in the parking lot, so they're. Uh, because I had a conversation with. BPW supervisor, and he says it's not just for them, but it's for your safety also. Cause some of the streets are crowned, and they could slide easily into your car, and so on and so forth, so. Please do not park on the streets in the winter time, so that they can thoroughly clean. The street.
So for the next two weeks, it looks like the extended forecast is gonna call for really cold temperatures.
Right.
Uh, we'll keep an eye on frost, those types of things, um. Our water infrastructure, since we've done a pretty good job at, at replacing that, I, I don't really have any immediate concerns of, of the depth, but there's gonna be some.
Possible.
Some possible locations that we might want to.
Water.
Have to consider running water, especially if they got a, a smaller service line, or if they're parking over the service line, it's gonna be. Properties that they're gonna want probably run the water.
Yeah.
I don't foresee us doing a citywide run of water, I don't believe it's necessary, but.
And those will be adjusted accordingly.
Um.
Usually, right?
Usually.
If, if we go to the real line, we do.
If citywide, you do.
If we do citywide, there might be a few isolated issues.
Issues, okay.
Um, yeah, it's, you know, how it helps us, so.
It certainly does.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for Josh or questions? Okay. Mark. She supports.
The time period here for this record is for twelve through January twelve. We had sixty-seven law enforcement related calls in the city. Um, another seven of those were motor vehicle crashes, which seem to be developed again. I intended, uh, on December seventeenth, I was the guest speaker at the Rotary luncheon, that was pretty fun, actually. I wouldn't mind doing that again, I only got about a third of the way through my list of things to talk about. And then entered a lot of questions.
And one of the intent, uh, techniques that we should have extended the time.
Well, that guy sitting next to you made me stop talking. Um, I calculated some year-end total systems for the year, uh, twenty-twenty-five. Our total calls for service for that year was nine hundred and forty. Uh, of that. Included, but it's not limited to, uh, one hundred and nine traffic stops, forty-six motor vehicle crashes. One hundred and thirty-three property checks, one hundred and fifteen assists to citizens or visitors. Eighty-one citations issued, eighty reports of suspicious activity. Uh, eight arrests and. We assisted the county with fifty-four law enforcement-related calls. Some over, uh, residents or things that happened close to the city that we can help. And in, there is the county and or state police assisted into the city with sixty-one also. That's pretty fair. Um, new officer position oral interviews are this Thursday. Initially, we were set up for three, we're down to two, so we'll just be having two interviews on Thursday. Uh. The conversation continues on the caution light intersection. So I had a chance meeting on January twelfth, uh, with Senator Thompson, I just happened to visit here, so I got him on board and. Uh, employed the use of his office to light a fire under, uh, M. Dot Volks. I spoke with the local. Supervisor for our area with M. Dot, and got him. To, oh, look at that intersection again. And more than likely, by the crystal ball, I would say we will end up with a four-way stop at that intersection. Sometime within the next year, possibly. Based on the complaints that I get from residents on forced avenues. As well as the incident, the crashes that we have there, and my own observations that, that intersection, I think that's gonna be our best option. A three-color traffic light, from what they're saying is we just don't have the traffic volume flowing through that intersection too.
Well, they need to come here July and August and September.
Yeah. Cause to me, there should be a traffic light.
Yeah, it's just, we're just not gonna have traffic.
Oh, right. Paramount, we push that issue, because a four-way stop's gonna be a disaster there.
It's be- it's better than what we have.
I hate this.
That's the plan, and then if, if that better option can be implemented, then we can, then he said they'll address the, uh. The southbound traffic lines, just to the north of the intersection that are causing some confusion for folks, so. We still working on it.
Any questions for Mark?
Yeah, buddy.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yes, and we also, uh, did get a report from our assessor and everything, and it's going very smoothly. There, and he's doing a great job. Jesus. I hope you all read the reports, uh, he's pretty thorough. Uh, thank you.
All right, if you got a copy of my report, and one of the strokes piece and affirmative, what calls go from what, primarily will look at here. Since we are meeting, um, Thursday with the, your other entities that not yet, I heard was. Um, they want to finally have things on a year-end basis. Um, Victoria will give you SFPs, so geez, we'll talk about that later, which is standard operating procedures and guidelines to operate the department. Um, City of Frankfurt had two hundred and ninety-one EMS calls, fifty-seven fighter calls, three hundred and forty-eight home. Our entire call body is five hundred and eighty EMS calls and two hundred and nine fires. So we have a total of seven hundred and ninety calls, we have the highest in Benzey County and in Cleveland County, majority of Cleveland County as well. Um, we get an average response time of nine minutes, seven minutes on eight minutes. And one hundred percent of the calls, nothing was ever missed. And that's again, in contrary to some of the other responding agencies around us who had missed calls. Um. Public safety message, uh, time to walk like a penguin again. Say, time of year, carbon dioxide, you're sitting there, a lot of these premises are working overtime to try to keep your homes warm. To make sure that they're up to speed and change your photos. Um, so. One other thing I wanted to note was, uh, on Ranger bid, I'm going to be listing the letter trouble range bid in order to try to move that. Try to move that twelve or ladder truck with ninety-two down the road as soon as possible. Um so I'm gonna get it on out there, just get four fishy balls in the water and catch a fish. Um so, any other questions?
And we will be meeting with the other entities. We also sent the. What what is called the M O U to the attorney and uh we're sending that out to the other. Energy's uh he's not calling it a memorandum of understanding, it's an agreement between the three. Uh communities, so the other communities are gonna be addressing that at our uh. And then we'll bring it to our council to approve it uh for our next meeting, hopefully. And they've all seen it. Okay, who's in on. To attend the items. Old business. Is now it's my understanding and you not have to. Uh it's to be in motion to approve or deny the attainable housing application for Street Kelly. At one two one one Elm Street uh. By resolution of coming coming six. Um we did all of the. Uh checkpoints at our last meeting, so this is basically. To approve it, since we don't have to, you know, open it up for public, so on and so forth, because we already did that.
The only thing we need to decide is on page um fifteen of the document. We just need to decide if the resolution was there, if it's going down, then the resolution will be there. On page um three, I know fifteen and sixteen from how the council was just that to read.
Okay, ten. Okay, here we go. Um.
So it'd be the years, and then if you agree with the verbiage of A and B. And then because if whatever amount of years, if it's below seven, then you, the the verbiage of this there as well.
Yes, and he supplied all of the necessary document and uh the assessor has. And his input um. So. We're down to the very last. Uh. So I I'm gonna suggest that we do four years like we did the rest of them.
I I um, yeah, I guess.
So I disagree on that, but the idea is that this is a temporary program and. Well, we had some discussion and we cast about. Cutting this down to three years so that they all expire on the same. Um timeframe so that we could. Uh review the health of the program without having the spread out the whole. You know, forever, basically.
Well, this would be, the four years would be included with the others that we.
Is it the same time?
What is, it it would be one year later, because.
Yeah, it'd be one year later.
So it would go until twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven, yeah.
All right, okay. So we're going to say the City of Frankfurt has determined that. Applicant qualifies for the A H E C can approve this application to extend. Exempt the facility from fifty percent. Of the otherwise applicable ad foreign taxes for a period of three years. And the city would like to monitor the healthy success of the program. And the reason, we have to say that because of the reasons is less than seven. When the property owners have demonstrated. Compliance with the order. And. Number sixteen, the city has included a statement of factors, criteria and objectives, if any. Necessary for extending the exemption. When the certificate is less than seven years for those factors, criterias and objectives. Are as follows, the city would like to monitor the health and success of the program. Property owners have demonstrated compliance with the order and verify income applications. And so we need. Uh someone to lead this. Resolution. I'll I'll start it. The above resolution was off offer offered by Holwerda and supported by.
Chargers.
Chargers to approve the application for attainable housing. Exemption certificate by resolution for Steve Kelly at Bob eleven Elm Street. Draw call.
Holwerda?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Chargers?
Yes.
Smolcer? And Temple?
Yes.
Okay. And operate is the court to sign. Oops. Yes. Lost it. Okay. The next one is. Local appointment of a local compensation commission appointment. Um there is a vacancy on the commission and Christine Volenta has expressed his interest in serving. Miss Volenta will be replacing the vacancy by Krista Bantall. Okay, so I will make a motion, no second needed to appoint Christine Volenta to the local compensation. With one-year term set to expire. January twentieth of twenty twenty seven.
And the reason why it's a one year and a one year and a one year is because that was the structure that was that was applied. By um.
Right.
Smolcer Richards? Yes, Chargers?
Yes.
Holwerda?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Temple?
Yes.
Okay. Recreation Board appointments. Again, this. Volenta wants to be on the recreation board. Um. So I will make a motion, no second needed to appoint Christine Volenta to a recreation board. To complete an existing three-year term set to expire ten nineteen of twenty six.
Chargers?
Yes.
Holwerda?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Temple?
Yes.
Smolcer Richard? Yes.
The next one is um. For appointment to the Marine Authority. Uh Brett Larson uh has expressed an interest in serving on this board. So I will make a motion. No second needed to appoint Brett Larson to the Marine Guard, complete an existing three-year term to expire. Three nineteen twenty twenty six.
Holwerda?
Yes.
Olson?
Yeah.
Temple?
Yes.
Smolcer Richard?
Yeah.
Chargers?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is attainable housing time timelines policy. Due to the suggestion of our um. One of our residents, uh we've Chris drafted up a policy. So that we have timelines and who does what, basically. Um and uh. This been sent to the attorney, he did a tweaking a little bit and. Uh. I hope you all read the time, you know, the timeline. For instance, the purpose of the policy, the background with this public act. Uh policy review, application procedure and timeline. Completion is submit submit form, notice city review, notice of public hearing, public hearing. Blah blah blah, so on and so forth. So it covers everything that we're supposed to do.
Yeah, also requires the applicant submit W two forms of attendance. So that's how we verify.
So that's our policy of who does what and so on and so forth.
If I I had a comment on this, um. I believe it would either be A one or A two. Um. Well, I think we should add some kind of language that states that the city is not. Responsible to. Reach back out to people if, or the state, the city is not responsible. To reach back out to the people if their application is um has errors in it. Um again, we're we're setting a deadline so that this thing doesn't drag out like it did last time. And if Chris is getting these things and they're wrong and she's taking time to go back. To these people to get it corralled.
It's either her, her or Josh. They not get this policy? At the time that they apply.
Well, and I'm wondering if we need to be more clear or say if you want us. To review it, it needs to be in. A month before August first. And for twenty-five dollars, Chris can review it or Josh can review it. For completeness. Cause you know, we're gonna get them in a situation where. Uh perhaps their address is wrong or they signed it wrong or their dollars didn't add up right. And we're gonna sit there and go, well, it's just a minor thing. We should change it. We should let them send it back. And it's gonna drag out. Like it has in the past.
So are you suggesting of changing the. The timeline to month before August first?
That we are not obligated to come to. To let them know prior to. Council review. So if it shows up. To come this day, council's gonna review it. Chris's report says this is invalid because the address is wrong or the dollars didn't add up correctly. Or some other issue that we don't have to go. We just throw it out. They're not approved. Versus going back to them, asking them to amend their application. So it's correct. Um. Um and if we want to, because we're a small town friend, right? So if we want to offer that. Then I think they should pay a review fee. Prior to the August first deadline. To have a review.
Well, we're gonna have to view one way or another.
Yeah. Yeah, but what I'm saying is. But are we gonna go back? We don't have to go back to them and say, you screwed up.
We've had several of them. I see what Pete's saying. We've had several of them that it wasn't complete. We've had to go back and say, hey, you missed this line, this line and this line. And then they've had to re- reget the, you know, bring us the information or amended or whatever. So I think what Pete's saying is, where does that end?
Yes, or maybe.
And we do say it, says it, you know, it must submit a completed application form. To me, completed means after it.
And have all the components.
Yeah. So if it doesn't. I mean. What I'm getting at is, why should we have to chase these people down? Hold their hand to amend it. Drag out our process.
Um maybe we could add on one and two uh. Completion of the form is. Totally the applicant's responsibility.
Well, and we can give them a copy, we can read back to all the pertinent information, but we can give them a copy of. Of one of the applications that is thorough, very, this is what we're looking for.
Well, on the checklist now that the state is. It's gonna be even more, it's gonna be changing and it's gonna be even more detailed. So you'll be able to check the box, check on the box.
Okay, so why don't we under one and two say completion. After completion of the form is the responsibility. Of the applicant. Does that cover it?
Please say the application must.
Yeah, help me to make it not sound cumbersome. There is a dead horse in the show.
Can I ask um? If we ask Chris to um, can we? Can we approve this? With a condition that Chris needs to look wrong and tighten up that language. So we can be done with it.
Yeah. So add that to the motion.
So the authorization of the clerk treasurer to work with is the attorney on additional verbiage.
Correct.
Well, I got it.
So I'm like expecting you to make that motion.
All right. Um. So. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for attainable housing timeline. Always stated one twenty 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 six. With. Authorizing the clerk treasurer to meet with the city attorney to amend the verbiage. To.
With additional verbiage?
With additional verbiage, yes.
Revised.
Revised for.
Revised for.
Okay, Temple has made a.
Any other discussion? Draw call, please.
Olson?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Smolcer Richard?
Yes.
Chargers?
Yes.
Holwerda?
Yes. Okay. Next thing, lighthouse restoration.
And you will also be sending out a letter to those to have to receive their.
Oh, right.
Um who did receive this um exemption currently, you'll be getting a copy of this policy, we'll send it to you, so you have it.
Uh okay. Next one, lighthouse restoration expense reimbursement.
Aaron Levy is our friend for lighthouse restoration, she's a volunteer. And she's incurred some expenses for this land, items associated with. Fundraising and and repair work with the lighthouse. Uh we've also had a uh extreme group of dedicated volunteers that. They actually go all over the state at different lighthouses and bond. But uh they come up here on three different occasions to uh to do a lot of, but. Essentially, Aaron has absorbed some expenses with her efforts and and she's requesting a reimbursement. Um the biggest portion of the reimbursement is for the colliders that we're selling. Um which will cover that expense, so that's a fundraiser. Twenty-six dollars. You can purchase them here at City Hall.
They're beautiful.
And uh she's doing a great job. But uh. But any questions with her reimbursement request?
I've already questioned you about a couple of them and checked them out and they're, all the expenses are legit.
Then when I had a question, well, when I went nineteen twenty five, the donation from her horse that. Thirty-five dollars. So let's amend it. Yeah, yeah, this should be. Well, she, well, she, 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 they put it off her, what we're reimbursed or just. He gave, he gave her seventy-five dollars and she's in cash, gosh, so she's asking.
And the same with the one up above.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So, and I've already questioned some, so I'll make a motion to authorize a general entry transferring. Two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents from reserve line item. One zero one and one zero six zeros and zero zero eight point two seven five. Lighthouse reserved to general fund cash and a budget amendment to the other service lines. One zero one, two nine nine, three zeros, eight zero zero and three zeros to refund. One zero one two nine nine, three zeros, eight zero zero and three zeros to refund the air greedy for expenses associated with the Frankfurt Lighthouse Restoration Project.
I'll start with that.
Okay. Roll call please.
Penfold?
Yes.
Smelter Richard? Yes. Chargers?
Yeah.
Forwarda?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yeah. All of our count numbering is changing.
I know.
It's been the same for the last thirty-plus years.
Nice.
It's awesome.
That is on our task and as soon as I get back from my leave, it'll be will be changing.
Okay, uh, Frankfurt Department Standard Operation Procedures and Standards Operating Guidelines. Uh, Mike and Dale, you both went over
Yeah.
those and made changes and.
Yeah, we've met several times and went through several deiterations and I think we're all comfortable with that. Some, some procedures versus guidelines and some back and forth and we've got some of the verbiage. And I think we've got a very good document now and might be my recommendation.
Well, we go over it again in the chat.
I don't know if I had it on my. Let me see. Yeah, well, I make a motion to accept the, uh, the
What are your thoughts?
Standard operating procedures and standard operating guidelines as presented. And I seek approval. So I'm making that motion to approve those, those documents. So I'm going to.
Okay. Any questions? We might, uh, for the two new people, I don't think that they have those documents.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. So, okay, roll call please.
Smelter Richard? Yes. Chargers?
Yes.
Forwarda?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yep.
Penfold?
Yes.
Heads. The next one is pickleball court expense from reserve.
This is an invoice you probably should have got back in October.
Yeah.
Elmers realized that they did not submit it, so here it is. So attached is an invoice in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from Elmers for completion of the striking associated with pickleball courts at Mars Park. As I mentioned, we should have had this invoice several months ago. But, uh, this was the mid-final last. I was, I asked Chris, well, do you have a donation? There's more money. There's still money in there. Um, because it was pretty much gonna, the donations that we have, we're going to cover everything except for, uh, the balance here, twenty-seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, sixty-seven cents. So what I'm requesting is, is to, uh, transfer twelve thousand, well, there's twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, thirty-three cents in the pickleball reserve account. Um, we'd like to take two thousand, seven hundred and three, two dollars, sixty-seven cents from previous fiscal year reserve. Then transfer the funds to the general fund cash to be expended along with the pickleball reserve funds from line item one oh one, seven, five, one, nine, seven, point two oh six. Uh, got the outlay of pickleball reserve expense.
So going to be my suggestion that if they, uh, raise any more money, they pay us back.
Where?
The twenty-seven hundred.
I agree now.
So at the end of the motion, we'll just add that, and then other funds donated.
Any official funds will revert back.
To that.
I have a quick question. Does that work, walking by the city or from Pickleball?
Well, we had a part, we had collateral partnership, I guess is the best way to put it. Where the, a group of folks, uh, then raised some, some dollars. And that's what was allowing us to retain Elmers. They were pretty involved with it.
Yeah.
If I had, if I had, it was directed. Well, it was directed by the city, but they had a quite a contact. It was a lot.
Something we directed. Cause I, I think they directed Elmers earlier on, I think somewhere.
Yeah. Right.
No, yeah, it will not. Yeah.
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 So under invoice, it was kind of interesting. Maybe it's just their known country, but it says paint Frankfurt Pickleball job dance.
In quality.
Yeah, the lights of that, I think it's interesting.
Yeah.
Did it done?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw him doing it, but whatever. It just kind of odd. Anyway, all right.
So rather than read everything that Josh just said, make the motion uh, that we pay this bill accordingly. Uh, and, uh, take it out of the necessary reserves.
I'll shut up then.
Okay. Any more questions?
Including any additional issues?
Yes.
Yes, any, yes. Please include that.
Chargers?
Yep.
Forwarda?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yeah.
Penfold?
Yes.
Smelter Richard? Yes.
Okay. Next one, capital improvement plan resolution. Two thousand two peer years. Okay, we finally I apologize for my error of not understanding how we had to do all of this stuff. But, um, to finally have gathered I learned that we need Josh here whenever we need to apologize.
Because he's the purchasing.
Because he's, and we were winging it and did it wrong. So I apologize if this has dragged out as long as it has. Um, so this is so that we can close with the pay uh, on this part. Very much.
I've been working with Steve Frank and he's been with, he's with military field for the resolution that's below. Um, and then this makes us compliant and then um, Mr. Frank will work with, uh, State Savings Bank and they will get this, continue to get the ball rolling and go from there. But it shouldn't be possible approval or anything else we counsel going forward.
Right. Okay, cause we've already made the motion to do that. So we uh, just need a motion, uh, to approve the capital improvement plan resolution. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve capital left, capital improvement bond resolution for the O-two pier staff ladder truck.
Well, I got a second.
Yes.
Okay. Take your pick, Chris. Roll call please.
Forwarda?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yep.
Penfold?
Yes.
Smelter Richard? Yes. Chargers?
Okay. Local government agreement for off-premises tasting room license. Uh, this came before the DDA. Josh, you want to take it?
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Bernice Street Distillery is seeking an off-premise tasting room license from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. The tasting room relocated at ten forty-eight Main Street. The distillery received support from the DDA on Tuesday, January sixth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, however, all approvals forwarded to the LCC, uh, must be done by city council. And since we do have an EDA in investment within the EDA corridor, the LCC allows these licenses to, to occur. So we've issued several in the last few years that are all similar to this.
I have a question.
Okay.
Should we not look at item K before this? Uh, cause they can't they can't search about their, can they?
Yes.
What's up?
Yeah, well, yes.
Okay.
And the reason, and the reason item K is, is after this because it, it doesn't need to be expanded if, if this doesn't get approved. You know, it's, it's getting expanded to them for that purpose.
But we just said they don't need the expansion to be able to serve alcohol.
They don't. They don't need a, uh,
They can.
So they just serve it. They have a license there with their license.
Okay.
Yeah, the expansion would just be to allow.
So it could be part, I mean, somebody could go down there, get a taco, get a barbecue sandwich, get a cocktail.
And sit.
It's, 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 yep.
Yep, and also social district.
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure of the life match charges before the hours.
Now there.
Well, not at all.
Okay.
Set the bill. Scott, is some of this going to be in the building or, or is it all in a container, but outside?
Yeah, so, um, we will have a container that's twenty-foot and it'll have fence around it, um, required by MLCC. And basically signage is that if they leave that fence, they are now allowed to enter the container to go get a taco or go get a beef brisket sandwich or go get a vegetable roll, et cetera. Um, and be able to be in that space, um, instead of yeah, basically this.
Only if the social system is going to expand.
Correct.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they have to stay within the fenced area.
Yeah, right. And, and the, the state requires, since there's a social district, just very small fenced area. Um, so it's not going to be any kind of big thing. Saying it's just a little foot rail outside of the twenty-foot container that maybe has seating like a one table um, kind of a thing. It's actually pretty much a water window to be within that food truck stays.
Okay, but again, that's only for social district to expand. You will have to have different fence requirements.
Right. Yeah, so the social state district is, and then we have to have operating agreements between all of the food trucks. I mean, there's a lot more hoops to jump through. And so this approach seemed like a logical approach. But it, it could be done without the expansion before. Yes.
So.
Make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. We all got it. So make a motion to adopt resolution to score for a street distillery to appear off-premises tasting room license from Big, Big, Mississippi again. L C.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Olsen?
Yep.
Penfold?
Yes.
Smelter Richard?
Yes.
Chargers?
Yes.
Forwarda?
Yes. I did one. Okay, here we go. Okay. Here we go. With the Second Amendment Consent Judgment Agreement for Dune Ridge Project. Three of us, um, attended the planning commission, so we're pretty well versed. What went down? She wanted to, uh,
Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
Planning Commission met on Tuesday, January thirteenth to review the updated site plan and proposed changes associated with development proposal for the Dune Ridge project, which is formerly Fishman's Landing. And, um, all of you, uh, my, my letter summary. So I did a deep dive into the history of this project that went back to the late nineties and then of course, uh, more specific the, the legal situation that the city was involved with, with this developer was led to, uh, in two thousand nine consent judgment agreement. And there were, uh, certain conditions that were put forth in that consent judgment agreement, but essentially authorize a forty-two unit condominium development to occur on those two parcels, twelve on the, on the waterfront side, thirty on the upland side. Um, and of course, as we know, nothing occurred for, for many years. Then leading up to two thousand nineteen, um, the then developer, uh, reinvested into the project, made some minor changes, came to the city with those changes. Uh, we went through the same process that we're doing right now. And so in two thousand nineteen, the project went before the planning commission. And there were some changes with the driveway approach and garage locations, the service specifics associated with the site planning. The density stayed the same and, and essentially the, the lot coverage area was real similar throughout the modifications. And that was approved with conditions. And they, uh, added some conditions to the conditions that were established two thousand nine. Um, some of that involved, uh, being more specific on site lighting, um, site lighting, we need to be start to sky compliant, then, uh, light poles had to be twelve foot or less. They also required, uh, a dense landscaping plan with, with the ultimate goal of buffering heavily along the side property lines to minimize the impact of the neighbors. Uh, also suggested some neighbor input on that. And then adding five spaces into the design. And then, uh, you know, the, the developer at that point in time made some, some movement. And then, uh, nothing had occurred up until here, uh, within the last eighteen months or so. Property as a new, new owner. That new owner has gone through the due diligence and reviewed the set judgments. So essentially we, we were in receipt of a new updated site plan and the planning commission reviewed that. Um, some of the, the changes with the most recent site plan, uh, dealt with an additional curb cut on the water parcel.
We should read all of those down of what we're going to do, Josh, there.
So, so based on the planning commission review of the amended site plan as presented by the developers on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six and the detailed discussion between the planning commission and the developers, the specific changes to the development plan from two thousand nineteen, uh, which is the date of the first amended consent judgment that would be implemented with the development as current proposal include the following. That would be one additional curb cut imposed on the waterfront parcel. So the single direction traffic flow and limit adverse impacts on traffic. Uh, this will require an M dot approval. Uh, second bullet is the parking lot layout is modified. This is just noting some changes with the project, but the parking lot layout is modified in each parcel as can be seen on the developer's modified site plan. Um, other changes was the garage placement. So this most recent updated site plan is proposed that all the garages be located on the upland parcel at a location near the normally portion of of the upland parcel. Um, the open space is proposed to be increased by six hundred and sixty-three square feet from two hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine square feet to two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and thirty-two square feet. The area dedicated to the roadways and sidewalks decreased from sixty-two thousand, two hundred and four square feet to fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three square feet. Now, I, I paused it for a second. It did require some additional parking spaces, so that's going to probably increase based on the square footage for that. Um, the ground floor area dedicated to the building is increased from thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-one square feet to thirty-five thousand, eighty-nine square feet. And this is for forty-two kind of minimum units and forty-two garage units. So over that all those structures, uh, that was the amount of ground floor area that increased, um, between thirty-five thousand, eighty-nine and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-one. The parking space size increased, um, from nine foot by twenty foot to ten foot by twenty foot. Although the proposal includes a reduction overall parking spots from seventy-nine open spaces to fifty-four open spaces. Um, the total parking available on site is proposed to accommodate ninety-six spaces, fifty-four open, forty-two in garage. Planning Commission asked if five additional spaces could be added in as well. That is a condition of that. Um, so there was a, a motion in support by the planning commission to make a representation to the Frank City Council to approve whole site plan changes, amendments and updates as proposed by the Dune Ridge developers. And to enter into a second amended consent judgment to identify and agree to the updated site plan details as dated one thirteen twenty-six with the following site plan changes and updated conditions to be approved by the city council and the party's report by the county cert court. So we packaged all these back together. So the bullets that I just read you would be integrated into that. Um, there will be fifty-nine open parking spaces plus forty-two garage, uh, space for a total of a hundred and one space. So that adds in the five additional that the planning commission wanted, with a special note that two additional spaces shall be located in the parking area at the top tier of the upland parcel. And then the planning commission also wanted to be understood that we're reaffirming, we're recommitting to the two thousand nine consent judgment and its associated conditions, which include the following. Um, and this deals with, uh, the separate four-unit building, two double units on the water side will be moved to an attached to the end of the eight-unit building for four dollars. With each double unit of the formerly separate four-unit building staggered to the extent possible without causing any of the other double units to encroach into the wetland area. Any parking spaces lost due to such move will be added to the parking area at southwest end of the unit. So this was actually a a condition that was put forth with consent judgments that was awarded by best county cert court of two thousand nine. Um, the other bullet points that. Um the other bullet points that go along with that. Um the developer will add provision in the form approved by the city to the condominium association bylaws to the effect that the stormwater system will be maintained by the condominium association in perpetuity. And that if the association does not do so, the city may establish a special assessment district and assume responsibility. For said maintenance and spec- specially assess the cost of staying to the condominium association and or condominium units. So as to maintain adequate access to waste collection emergency vehicles, there will be no parking at the north end of the parking area on the west side of M twenty two in front of the dumpster. Except for the boardwalk shown on the plan and except for the selective tree cutting solely. To permit a filter view for condominium units, um no clear cutting, uh the wetlands on the water side shall remain preserved and managed in their natural state. Any preservation, management and tree training activities shall be. Unutilizing generally accepted wetland management practices, the boardwalk may be shifted to maintain the same relationship to the condominium units after four units at the south end. Are attached to the remaining four units. Project will be developed into a phase to be decided by the developer with updates to scheduling and development timelines for each phase to be communicated to the city. Um as each phase is developed, stormwater system required to drain the phase development site will be completed, so that all storm drainage will be contained on the overall site. Developer will have to obtain all necessary permits required by any other local state or agency. Um so this is what include Eagle, it include the Corps of Engineers for the for the dockage, it will include the the best kind of building department. Uh for settling the chemical.
I I wanna go back up here uh where you said relation to the condominium units after four units at the south end are attached. You said to the remaining four, but it's this document says eight.
Yeah, so this this goes back to oh nine when they had two separate units now. I mean, it's kind of a moot point because the site plan illustrates as a towards as twelve.
Okay. Um.
But none of that's changed since that.
Okay, okay.
Question for you.
Yup.
Um where you left uh um requiring permits, uh. Does it stipulate they have to be? In place before any work is completed, so no site work, no site drop until all permits are.
It doesn't state that, but that's.
It's not understood, right?
It's not understood, I don't think.
Well.
Um well, I mean, that's what happened at Dollar General, right? In honor, they started without Eagle permits and.
Well. We control the land use, so we'll we'll make sure that the land use is issued with all those other contingent permits.
Yeah.
So we'll control that.
I mean, I shouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't wanna start without all those, but you know, it was what happens in the projects that are finished.
Okay, I can address that.
So.
All right. When pulling permit for a phase of the project, developer will provide irrevocable letter of credit to the city as required by section eight one one six point one one of the city zoning ordinance. On commencement of construction of building, the developer shall provide an irrevocable letter of credit to the city to guarantee construction of the building shell. Developer shall prosecute with diligence and complete fully the exterior of the building shell. All required bonds and or letters of credit shall be by bank or title company. Water and sewer systems will be public, except that the leads will be private. The extension of all utilities to the development shall be constructed in accordance with all the rules and regulations of the city and any other local state or agency having jurisdiction over same. The extension of such water sewer system shall be subject to inspection by the city engineer. The developer shall reimburse the city for all reasonable inspection fees.
So back to the he. Irrevocable um. Funds. That they have to complete the shell um. So there's a once they put a foundation in place, they have to complete again, I've seen more developments, you know, they get. Uh for instance, again, I'm not saying these guys would do this, but they get a foundation in and then find out. They don't have the funds or the resales to move forward. Does that mean? How's that fitting with this? They have to at least get the shell up, or can they leave a half? Done.
I mean, wait, this is where they gotta get the show up.
Okay.
Is there a timeline on that? It's not stated in the concept, but um I'd like to see a timeline, yeah. But it's not just. Moving at a thorough pace.
Well, right.
We must look at it.
Well, whatever the planning commission, they were doing, going to do it in three phases. They were gonna do waterfront. The uh.
Sure, yeah, I think the timeline Brady is speaking about, sorry Brady, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, is once they start a phase. Or more importantly, probably second phase, so they get the first building done, they put a foundation in and they stop work. How long do they have to complete the second building? Or or lose their um espro. For like a little bit of work, did I hit that right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we'll obviously, we'll have that conversation with the developer as we're issuing events, we'll we'll have. Need more timelines, but uh.
Well, I know my son um built. A home over on Crystal Lake, and he just told me the other night. He had the the building permit expired by a certain date and he had to have it completed, I don't know if that's. Yeah.
I did. The two projects that come to mind are the two hotels south of East Eagan. That uh. They they got the structural system up and it's had for many years and they just had to. The city finally. Went through enough court battles to get that taken over.
But can Josh have control over that with uh not necessarily the building permit, but? The land use permit and stuff like that.
Each phase is we can we can talk about the timelines and schedule, I think. Yeah, phase one has a timeline of X month, months, phase two from foundation to finish.
Right, right.
Timeline in place for each.
So in other words, once a foundation has.
Yeah, then we need to know, you need to, if you say, whatever we make that number, six months, it needs to be six months. There's a fine.
Taking a timeline, it's like you don't have to have that approved by the circuit court.
No, no. That would take internal. And I think um. To not scare the developer, um I think, you know. They'll have some kind of project scheduled by then and we can.
Right.
We can. They're kind of secondary time, we're just gonna. Hold them to it.
Right.
But.
Right.
And I think part of it, too, is that sites not getting that bad and just continuous work, we're progressing, whether they. Meet their deadline right to the day or month, is that's less concerning to me than just that continuous work. And so something setting setting that be here for a year or whatever.
Yeah. We don't want a foundation in. And um to say, I'm I'm still working on it, I put um ten feet of sill plate on this month. And next month, I put ten more on, is this a foundation sits here for a year, they count the rest of those buildings and once the foundation goes in. They need to see it through uh in a reasonable time.
Yeah.
Confirmation.
And that does not have to be part of the consent, no, that's internal control. Right?
So there's there's one more bullet from the two thousand nine. Conditions, and that's the developer shall make any changes on M twenty two required by M dot, so that's just M dot, that's all I'll say. Right, uh and then the two thousand nineteen. Uh uh amendment. In which we we reaffirmed them and recommitted them. And that is associated with all lightings, a bit downward, no light, follow them to twelve foot and is dark sky compliant, and that the landscaping. Supports a dense native plant vegetative buffer and encourages neighbor input since see. And to minimize light, um uh side property lines shall have. Dense planting to minimize noise visual impacts of the neighborhood properties, then. Um the last thing that got added here kind of reiterates what what we talked about with the parking, but further, the planning commission would like to review the final architectural renderings. And the landscaping plan with a condition that the developer will add a minimum of five additional spaces. Parking spots with two additional spots placed on the top tier parking area around college, so. And then um again, this was this agenda item. I drafted it, sent it to Ross and he vetted it. And uh helped with the the warning on a motion.
So. Well, I I got an addition, so. And I'm for this, uh really going forward, I think it's very important to the city and I think uh it will be uh. Obviously important. For many reasons and uh that, so. But I do have a concern. And it's the same concern that the uh planning commission brought up, you know, that. Parking is gonna be tight, and I know that they've actually. You know, they decreased the open spaces, but they also added the garage areas. You know, I I question that everyone's gonna use the garage areas for actually parking cars and so. But there is enough open spaces to accommodate. You know, the uh the people in the in the condos, but. Uh the question that that came to me was with the uh. With the marina there, if the marina area with the boats, if that's gonna be solely for the residents of the development.
Right.
Or if they're going, if there's a possibility that they lease out uh dock space. Because if they, if if that's if that's a direction that could happen, or they they may do. I would question then, you know, we'll have additional people coming in. For that development, the parking spaces will even be. Less i- as far as. You know, to accommodate those people that are that are coming in just using the dock.
So can't we, i- if I'm not mistaken, Dan, maybe you can help me here, um. You have to produce us, I believe, as a condition of this, the uh homeowners association rules. Um. Do they have to do that before they get their permit shot?
No.
Okay, so I I don't, I think Dale, I think you bring up a good point, if. If you were to lease those out or another, a private owner were to lease, then parking becomes a bigger issue, especially on the lake. Um where you really, I mean, you're right down to barely enough. Uh quite frankly, not. I- in my opinion, despite what the code says, but um I I think you're grasping what we're selling or fishing out here is that uh. Those docks need to be only for um resident. Viewers.
Well, and.
More or as parking, right, that's harder to put a baby back on the boat, I know, but it's that.
If there are boats and say people trailer them in and watching that boat, I'm where are the trailers getting parked, I hope now I'm kind of in the main site. In the parking lot, that's already sparse.
Good one, too.
That's.
So anyway. So. That that's concerned. So.
How how do we address that? Can you make that a condition?
Uh I don't see why you couldn't. This is like, you know, this is a point of borders with it, you know, we're struggling a little bit because there's twenty slips, forty two units. You know, I I've been, they're not, they're they're floating. Of course, I can't do it. But you can, you know, the kind of stuff right now, it's going through some sort of licensing. That would be a hack to. Not necessarily the unit per se, but it would have to be part of the condo unit, you know, but not necessarily as part of like your. Your deed for the unit, can't do that. We've already kind of looked through a little bit of of work that I discovered that, so. So it it becomes a little bit of a challenge how you.
Users of condominiums only, not.
I I think that, you know, that would be, however you wanna, we can figure that out legally, but then I think that's fine, there's no intention of doing anything. Outside of that, I mean, ultimately, it's gonna be. You know, once once we're gone and out of the way, the developer's gone, that's the homeowners association, it takes that, but if it's part of the condo docs, which are by by way of recording for everybody to see. Public documents at that point, it's that, you know, exclusively, but would that be a condition of what, you know, this, I I think that's an issue, I think I could agree to that.
Yeah, because, you know. If if I'm the president, the homeowners association, and you guys are gone, there's twenty at these slips there, and I see, I see red right in my eyes, right? So I can, I'm right one to Josh, right? Still believe as well. You know, so.
Okay.
Right, I didn't really, the parking, you know, give address a little bit of the required, uh. You know, you want me to just quickly, you know.
Please do.
So we we did have um. So when, well, that, you know, the park for Dexter parking. I only have little guys tonight, so there was three, you know, three different uh. Three different uh um. Areas that I had him look at to increase the parking. Two of them are reasonable, one isn't. You're probably gonna be most concerned, but that's. That goes, so if if um. If you look up on the top, so the the ridge was the most, so the ridge, obviously, the ones at the the top of the site. Were the most concerning, so i- if you can see uh in that blue box, that's we're uh proposing to get seven additional spots in there. Right, and then. The other blue box that would be associated with the what we're calling the trailer units will be just the east of the road. We can get additional four units, four eleven total. The other area in green. Isn't really feasible, and we would have to add about a hundred and seventy five foot feet of uh retaining wall to get five spots, it's just not financially feasible to do that, so. And I don't think anybody wants additional. Uh retaining wall in this project. That's what we're gonna.
So a question on this, um you're not doing, is that in reference to the parking or the the um the landscape screen?
Sorry, no, this is completely.
Okay, it's made it's made a line.
It's just, it's just, no, all all it's from the key is that there's.
Yeah.
A hundred and seventy five feet of wall would be needed.
No, I I I was just making sure you were just. You know, some that line.
He gave me three options, I mean, this was obviously fast track because you were here last.
No, I I.
I wanted to.
I like. I like what you addressed here.
I wanted to do it right away, there's there's an ointment spot where you just can't squeeze anything is down on the lawn. I mean, we're we're, you know, that that's the reason why we're proposing uh. The circular access of in and out, and by the way, it's one way traffic and one way out, so you know, from a standpoint of.
So.
You know.
May I ask a question, please, Keith? So instead of adding five as planning commission requested, you're actually adding eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I could get more, I'd probably get more, I mean, we're we're looking, it's it's. There isn't anyone wrong, I mean, without, you know, making substantial adjustments to the site, ex- excavating out, anybody wants that, we don't.
No, well, you're you're trying to maintain the slope, basically.
Well, and then I. The other issue would be. Accessibility.
Right.
Fire truck returns in particular, I'm not sure what's your most concerning.
So, yes. Okay.
Mike. Um. Have you had a chance to look at this specifically, you and I briefly talked about the fourteen foot wide area down at the lake?
Right.
Um does that meet your requirements?
Well, if we follow N F P A standard code one, uh I think it's twenty foot. And Josh, do we have an overridance return to driveways like some of the other townships?
No, I don't. But but the actual. Clear area would be would be twelve feet.
Well, yeah, they drive on grass, yes.
Yeah. Fourteen gonna be fine, the wind mirrors on Friday.
But do you see in front?
Oh, yeah, that would be the only problem is that pitch point.
Can't get through there, um it may be something. You wanna look at, I think you could at least get a couple of it, so being there without changing your design, really just shortening the sidewalk.
Now, we get a letter truck up on the top, they're gonna have out there these six foot. And sliding, drop tail wrench.
Should be good up top.
Yeah.
But only fourteen foot would be going from one parking area to an accident.
Right, and it's right here. Yeah, when he drives, even just to drive in through a chat.
But there shouldn't.
Yeah, I got one room there, yeah, if I may, yes, possibly.
This, I don't know if this is like the final, I didn't have one scars from landing, so. This is that final surprise to review and they're gonna be compliant with fire code.
Right.
And requirement said you would, you would get better, so, more, but it would be, it's a, well, not like what we can provide.
Well, I think that you can answer parking issues by maybe.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, a lot of water can be great somehow.
Right.
They can, you know, more and we do that, the less rooms.
Let's give up too, yeah.
Uh.
Okay, I have no idea, it could be a possibility. So, I'm ready to make a motion. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation associated with the Doom Ridge project. formally fishermen's landing. With noted site plan changes and conditions noted above. And draft meeting minutes from the January thirteen, two thousand twenty six planning commission meeting. And to direct the city superintendent and the city attorney. To develop a second amended consent judgment document filed with the Bensy County Circuit Court. Which implements the foregoing foregoing changes and updates to the development and site plan for the project. Um, do I have a second? We have a second before any further discussion.
Also.
Thank you.
Um. So, so what does, do we have to add language that that had a sketch? They added even spots and we would like to keep to that, um. So I'm getting you not um assuming on there.
So that, so up there where it says five.
Where how it's threatened, I maybe you'll give me that.
Yes, okay, um, and then just, I guess, for the public. Um. We can't deny a project, correct?
Well, they they can build projects on the two thousand item site plan with. Right now.
Right, I, and so I just want everyone to understand that, um. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other discussion? For all.
Temple?
Yes.
Smelter, Richards, let's see. Charter. Charters?
Yes.
Horner?
Yes.
Olsen.
Okay.
Relate in the ads.
Okay, okay. The last agenda item, D D A authority social district expansion. Um, John.
So.
What's a D D A?
Yeah, yes, so back in March twenty twenty five, as the city council, at the recognition of the downtown development authorities approved the creation of social district among the main street corridor. The boundary essentially encompasses the entire main street corridor from Interplace to Water Quaid Drive, from Second Street to Eighth Street, including the bus. Task review is a proposed expansion of the social district which would extend to Eleventh Street to include the menus on the main area. Yeah. To accommodate the first story facing. And D D A recommend to do this and is now report to the city council.
I am. I have concerns with this, um, as I have concerns with the whole social district in a way it was approved, I believe it was approved premature without. Um, citizens input. And I was also told that at the time that it was trial. And we'll see how it would go, I find it hard to believe we want to expand on something that was going to be a trial basis to begin with. I also really think um we should solicit public input on whether or not. The social district should be even considered for, frankly, when we were discussing rooftop. Patios, I mean, I don't want to insult citizens that we do not have party atmosphere. And you can spin this thing any way you want, but having people walking up and down Main Street drinking. Um, can only lead to a party atmosphere, especially if there's a basher left party, bashwood party, class reunion, fireworks. Any of that, um. So I therefore I would be strongly against the expansion, and I also would hope that um we as the city council would consider. Um, bringing in public input of whether or not we should even have a social district. Because when I talk to D D A and ask them. A couple of very simple questions, did you even talk to the local businesses first? They said no. I asked them if they talked to residents surrounding the downtown area, and they said no. The only people they talked to was the restaurant association. That's the end of my spiel.
I feel like we had pretty substantial thoughts over this this first two.
Yeah, we.
Very substantial, actually, over the years and.
We had a lot of years.
That to the pub. Well, I believe there are a lot of public here in analysis. Um, the time.
And my, I have a concern, and it's a subset of what Pete was saying, and and again, on the social district, you know, that I voted for. Um, and and that, but it was kind of, it was kind of uh. Kind of stated at the time, let's, let's proceed with this, which I was in agreement with and that, but it was also kind of, let's see how things go. And um, and that, and I, so from that standpoint, I'd really like to. Get a year under our belt and see how things go before expanding it a little bit further, that's, that's just my take on, um. So, but.
I don't think expanding that, I mean, basically, all we're doing is being inclusive of the menus on main area and. Why not be inclusive and now that, I mean, it really change a whole lot of anything in the social district? Not our social district.
Well, and we had at D D A, because I was at that meeting, um, we've requested our chief police. To do major research and come back and. And he, he did a good job, he didn't just go locally, he went south, you know.
Man Steve basically, tighter power in the things.
Well, that's Man Steve, we're frank. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, New York City probably does.
Me too, there's always all that, Peter Bar, this is, so I'm gonna do the same.
So is anybody ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the expansion of the social district in California.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Smelter, Richards?
Yeah.
Charters?
No.
Horner?
Yes.
Olsen?
Yes.
Temple?
No.
Okay, most of here. How? Public input, within the item summary.
Can you leave me for a minute after?
No public input?
Look at those, right, that sound like, distracting.
Any public input?
I have public input.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Nancy Smith, thirteen sixty Bello's Avenue, um, I have one, I I have a question and a statement. Um, there were no drop calls, uh, emergent calls in two thousand twenty five, can you give me any information on two thousand twenty four? Chief Ceteron.
You mean by drop calls?
Drop emergency calls.
And that would be a central dispatch question.
That's not information you've given before to the public?
No, because I know I'm not permitted to drop calls, that that would be a, uh, Corey would be the one that.
No, you had said that there were no drop calls in two thousand twenty five.
Oh, we we made one hundred percent of calls, yeah, the nine one one calls that we got when we done that, no.
And the twenty ones you got, right?
They responded, two years, we had two years, and two consistent years we got ours.
Yeah, um, and you haven't been notified of any calls that were received. Thank you, the other concern I have um with the. You know, workout, workforce housing to affordable to attainable housing, which is kind of a whole shift in terms of focus. Um, one of the things you need to know is there's a very large sexual offender registry in this area, both in Alberta and Frankfurt for the community size. I don't know if that's into any of the um qualifications, but you're gonna have people that are gonna be applying that needs to be included. And also people who are gonna be living in those facilities if they're not the person on the, on the, uh, you know, lease or whatever. That's really important, and when you start talking about putting houses on school grounds, I I question the legitimacy of that. But I also really question um the security of that in terms of the sexual offenders, we have quite a few of them, I don't know if you guys have ever gone on the website, but they're all over. Um, and there is no state restriction on on how far these people have to be living from a school. So they can be, there's not, there used to be a thousand foot restriction in terms of where they could be located near a school, and there isn't that that was withdrawn in two thousand twenty. By our governor, and uh, so these people can be on school grounds. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration.
Any other public input?
Thanks for the roll call, I appreciate it.
Any other public input? Thank you for coming, motion to adjourn. Almost adjourned.
That's the wood. We're all chatters. Charters?
Charter.
Charters are adjourned.
Charters. Horner?
Yeah.
Olsen?
Yeah.
Temple?
Yeah.
Smelter, Richards.
Not even making a finding for her to. I don't know much, perfect broad, perfect, don't count.